And welcome. It is 6:01, June 7, 2022. Laguna Beach Unified School Board's open session is called Order. Number one is procedural and the numbers of the public present. So we'll cover this under 5A or when there are members of the public in attendance. So they feel welcomed, heard, and confident in providing testimony. Ms. Weber, would you please call the role to establish your form?
Clerk Osborne.
Here.
Member Kelly.
Here.
Member Perry. Member Vickers.
Here.
President Norman.
Here. Thank you, Ms. Weber. This takes us to open session. Is the, are you going to leave us on the pledge?
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. This takes us to 3C adoption agenda. Dr. Borre, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes. Item 9A, the resolution for the educational protection account should read 22-07 and not 22-06.
Thank you, Dr. Borre. Board may have a motion and a second to adopt today's agenda as amended.
Second.
Thank you. Student provisional vote? Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next is item 4A, recognition of student board members. If we can all kind of come up here. The board will recognize Isabel and Natalie in our appreciation for their outstanding dedication service to Laguna Beach Unified School Board District for the 2021-2022 school board year.
Natalie and Isabel, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Thanking you guys for your service this school year. It's been really neat to watch you guys grow from the beginning of the year now on the cusp of your retirement from the student position on the school board. But again, thank you. I think you've learned a lot about sitting on a board and I think you can carry your boardsmanship forward to lots of other organizations that you might choose to go on to. So thank you very much on behalf of the entire board.
It's been, I think, unique to the two of you that you have really gotten into what we do, what it means, what it's all about. And I can tell that by the depths of your questions and not just accepting what's put in front of you, but actually contributing and providing us with information that can make a difference in how we see things. Thank you.
Your contributions have been so valuable to have your point of view. We really appreciate you guys both. Thank you.
Can you run again? Going into your senior year?
Yes. They both have re-applied, actually, so.
Yeah, great news.
Thank you both for speaking for all students and really thinking about how everything's connected. Really appreciate it. You guys are great. And hopefully we get to see you again next year. And this is going to take a, and do you guys want to say anything? I don't mean to skip you.
It was so fun and interesting and I learned a lot working with all of you guys. And I'm really happy I was able to take on this position and definitely getting to know like Izzy Moore. We didn't really know each other and I think we like got along super well. So it was a super cool experience. Hope to see you next year. Thank you.
So when I came into the position, I think I had the impression that I was going to be doing like all sorts of reforms, that there was gonna, I don't know, be like a lot of change. But what I've realized is that, like, the school district, you guys do everything so well. I feel like they're, in my opinion, there's not too much that you have to improve on. And I think the students at LBHS, most of their complaints aren't anything that's like stemming from the school. So I think students are really happy to sit LBHS with how the school runs. So, yeah.
That's what Jan and the board, that's what we all appreciate very much. Thank you for that. And with that, where I move to public comment and I don't see anyone here. So we'll move to six reports and we're going to start with our two amazing student board members to start your reports. Natalie, which one are you going to go first? I totally forgot no reports for you guys. Don't, don't be, I remember she. Yeah. It was very funny because I was like, okay, and then Natalie, you're going to vote this evening? I'm not prepped, so.
I'm voting this evening.
Okay, awesome. Okay, so this goes us to bargaining. It all starts on Sarah's right there and start with LaBuca. President Harper, floor yours.
Meeting, we have Monday. Lots of business to take care of for the final end of the year. And we voted on our contract and ratified that overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly. It was such a generous offer. And I thank everybody on the negotiating team and you, Dr. Valoria, and I know the board plays a role in supporting our teachers in every way. So it was very much appreciated and the contract passed overwhelmingly. Every two years, we vote on two board positions in LaBuca and two site representatives. And just so we don't have our full site reps and our full board turning over, similar to what you all do. And so we voted for president and treasurer and we were uncontested. So I ran and Valerie quickly ran and we will be with you all for two more years. And then we also, our site reps, Randy Beckley, the French teacher from Thurston Middle School, served for two years as site rep, did a wonderful job. And April Kaufman, math teacher from Thurston Middle School, has stepped in to fill her shoes. And at El Moro, Jamie Jamison, served as site rep at El Moro and did a wonderful job. And we will have Kama Stevens, second grade teacher, stepping in and filling her shoes. And also when Jamie gave her site rep report, I know I said this along the same lines but last week, but that she said in her site rep report and her official report that she was, they were so overwhelmed by the outpouring of support and compassion from all of you that they just were, it was unbelievable to them of how supported they felt. So, and she said that was such a depth of emotion. I just felt like I needed to repeat that and represent that to you, that you guys really came together in that time of need and supported the teachers and the staff and everyone. And then we also voted for, to make a contribution to the Surf Rider Foundation for our beloved Chris Steady. And he enjoyed surfing and loved to surf. And so we thought that was a good way to memorialize him. Also, we, I felt like I had one more thing to tell you guys all. I think that was basically it. And that we have three more days left and we are looking forward to seeing you all at our barbecue. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. And thanks for sharing those sentiments as well. And then Margaret, you're up next. President.
Yes. Well, good evening. We also had our ratification meeting last week on the tentative agreement. And it certainly passed. So everyone is very pleased with the contract and what was negotiated. And I'll mention again, the professional growth that is there for classified employees is really, everyone that spoke to me about it was really pleased because the recognition of their current educational background, but where they may aspire to move forward will be recognized by the district. And that's really very, very positive. Also, the evaluation form, and I'm just going to mention that because it is again, reaching out to the classified employees to kind of, you know, what's your direction? Where are you going? That little bit of contact beforehand. So that's really promising. I think that people will really appreciate that as the site rep, as far as administrators get to know the classified members on their staff. We are having a meeting tomorrow to discuss the ratification of MOUs regarding reclass. And I want to say that the reclass committee worked very diligently this year on making sure that we, we had to do a little, we just had so much on the table last year. We had to move a few things around. So this is to get things more in alignment. And we will have that meeting tomorrow. And hopefully at the 23rd meeting, I can report on that. And Sarah has wonderful news and her side of the fence. But as you know, this is my, June 30th is my last day as president of CSEA. And moving forward, there will be, have to be some reorganization of the chapter. And without saying much more about that, I will leave it at that. And I've enjoyed very much being a part of CSEA for all these years and being a part of the board. And that's all I'd like to say on that. And thank you.
Thank you very much. And I know we can, we're going to speak more at the next meeting as well on that subject. And we are so appreciative of you. So, so appreciative. This is going to move us to superintendent for your part. Yeah.
Yeah, you skipped C. You just didn't say no report. So I just want to say it's obviously a busy week. I know Sarah and Margaret both kind of mentioned, as we kind of wrap up this school year, we have lots of promotions and graduations this, this week on Thursday night. I look forward to seeing all of you, most of you there. I know some, some folks can't make it because they have their own graduations to attend to. You can definitely feel the excitement. My house is buzzing, having both an eighth grader and a senior. We did have convocation on Friday. It was a great event. It was outside. It was really nice. Special thanks to Angela Ship and the entire scholarship committee for putting on such a nice event. I think it was, it was actually kind of nice to be outside, actually, versus inside the theater. It was, it was, yeah, returned, right. It's funny because you get to see folks return back who have, you know, been at that school for so many years and mentioned that, you know, you'd all be sitting in the pool right now. I mean, there's such a history from folks coming back. And I appreciate, you know, Dr. Kelly was there as well. I think, I'm sure he'll have remarks at some point for his report around the event. But it is just, it's just a nice event. It's always smiles, seeing the students in their caps and gowns. And again, just grateful. I think they gave away over $400,000 or something like that. So it's just so amazing. So, and last, I'll keep it short because we just saw each other last week as well. I just want to thank both of our associations for all their support and hard work this year. I know at the beginning of the year, the year kind of went by a little slow. And then as soon as January hit, it just felt like it was just a race to the end here. But, you know, each year, as we kind of navigate COVID and all the different pieces that come with that, I think I recognize how lucky we are to have such an amazing group of folks that work with us. And we have amazing leadership for NCSCA and in LaBuca that helps support all that work on behalf of our students. So thank you for all the work that you do. And to our two student board reps, I look forward to interviewing all the folks again. And, you know, it, it's really nice to have you here and have you part of all the conversations that we have. So thank you for all the work that you've done. So I know board prep can be a little boring at times, but, you know, we get to see each other usually. And I really do enjoy that opportunity. So that's my report.
Thank you so much for that. And Mr. Dixon, it's good to see you this evening. You have the floor.
Thank you, President Norman. Can't really say better than Dr. Valoria just did. I just want to echo everything he said. So thank you to both of you and our bargaining partners. And thank you and good luck, guys. Hope to see you next year.
Thank you for that. Mr. Collin, your report. Good to see you this evening.
Good to see you as well. And there's no report from resources this evening.
It's good to see each other on Tuesday after a Thursday, man. Dr. February, it's good to see you.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, you know, wanted to say just real quick how proud I am of our staff and our students, certificate, classified, and all that they've accomplished this year. You know, two meetings ago, we had the recognition, which was just amazing to see. Last, last week, we saw a lot of different achievements that students have done, all the different programs that we've been running. And to think that, you know, nine months ago, we were getting started and we were worried about, I mean, all these different mitigating factors. And it was just a very different time. So it's been pretty humbling to see all the accomplishments that the kids have done and the staff have done over the last nine to 10 months. And so I just want to make sure, I think, and I actually want to pick three people out specifically who are here tonight are three instructional services directors. Irene White, Dr. Michael Keller, and Dr. Betsy Cannonberg, who are really instrumental in making all that happen. They're everywhere. Every time I turn around, they're at an IUP meeting. I think the principals over El Moro right now, I mean, they're all over the place. And can't think enough how they just step up without even have, we don't even have to ask. They know to jump in and help and support and lead. So we're very fortunate to have them help with all those accomplishments that the staff and students have done this year. Thank you.
Your team is so synchronized. I think you guys can finish each other's sentences. It's impressive. Board members, do you have any questions? I know those were really brief, but before we jump in, okay. So the next, this moves us to 6F. And Dr. Principal Hatchell, from Top of the World, good evening. It's good to see you. Would you like questions during your presentation at the end?
Sure. During is fine, whatever you feel comfortable with.
Okay, thank you.
Well, good evening. It is a pleasure to present to you tonight regarding some of the highlights of our work at Top of the World. Our focus areas this year have really been around the commitments of LBUSD. One, making sure that we touch every student every day. We've done that through our multi-tiered system of support this year. The second is on our goals of continuous improvement for ourselves as staff members, as well as making sure that our students are continually improving in their academic and social emotional behaviors. And then our third commitment, of course, is that we understand deeply that those relationships matter. We've extended beyond just the relationships of building those personal connections with each other to making sure that we are building connections with relevancy to the curriculum and the world around us and our teaching and learning. Our first area of focus is again with that multi-tiered system of support. And I know many of you have been at Top of the World this year to take a look at what we have done. When we look at that MTSS support, we're really looking at three tiers of instruction. That tier one being the instruction that every student gets at grade level, the tier two or the yellow tier, we refer to as students who need a little bit of extra intervention. And then the tier three generally are kids that are performing one grade level below or more. And we're building in time this year, four days a week, approximately 45 minutes a day in a program that we call win time or whatever I need time. And during that time, we have focused on interventions and enrichments in ELA and mathematics so that our kids get exactly what they need based upon data analysis so that we're closing achievement gaps. And again, giving them some enrichment opportunities with literature circles or things that maybe expand their knowledge if they've already met the standards. We were blessed this year with hiring some additional support. For our win time, we hired Rosie Haynes as a math TOSA this year. And we also converted some of our instructional assistance to MTSS instructional assistance. We have four that support that win time and push into our flexible group, groupings during each of those blocks. We believe as a staff, when we looked and reflected upon that time, that the consistent intervention and enrichment that was given, the lower ratio in student-staff that was able to target instruction, the flexible groupings, the targeted focus, really made a difference in our data and outcomes. When you look at this diagram here, this really highlights our growth from the beginning of the year to the end of the year in each of those focus areas. Generally, we are wanting to see that 80% at that tier one level. And you can see here that in math in particular, we started off with over half of our kids at 30% or below coming in on standard. It could be a reality of COVID, but we had a lot of work to do to help really get those kids on grade level. At the end of the year, you'll, you'll see that we made considerable growth. I'd like to highlight our third grade team that went from that 21% to our 85% in that tier one. And our fifth graders, thank you to our amazing team for having 87% of our kids achieve that tier one status. So they should be well-prepared as they're coming into TMS. And I'd also like to highlight our tier three data. So you'll see from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, there was a considerable decrease in the amount of students needing that exceptional intervention in the tier three level. In language arts, you'll see our kids came in a little bit higher at the beginning of the year. And we still had quite a bit of work that we needed to do. I'd like to highlight a couple of our grade levels, kindergarten and third grade, where we have 90% of our students that are at that tier one level. And again, a significant amount of reduction of students in that tier three level. You'll notice that there is a TBD in that fourth grade. We have not, by the time that I had to analyze the data for the board presentation, we did not have all of those scores in yet for our fourth graders, but they will be, they will be in soon as we only have two more days of school left. This is our fabulous MTSS team that supports our kids. We have Rosie Haynes and you'll hear directly from her in just a second in a video to explain what we do during that tier three instruction. Levy Shirley is our reading teacher. We have Margaret Warder here that serves as our paraprofessional to support that. And then we also have four MTSS IAs. Those aides go into our win time to support tier two instruction and also enrichment. I also wanted to give a shout out to Mary Ann Bynum. She has been our instructional coach this year and we gave our point two allocation for her to really focus in on honing in on that data. So she brings the data to our professional learning communities on a weekly basis to really help coach them on how to group our kids and also how to really target instruction. So we focus on exactly what they need to close those gaps. And here's a little word from Rosie. I think we're going to hear from Rosie. Do we have sound? Oh, so sorry. Victoria, I may need some help. Yeah, sorry. Trying to get back to Rosie. There we go.
Hi, my name is Rosie Haynes. I'm proud to be part of the Laguna Beach Unified School District. I teach at Top of the World Elementary School. This year, I was fortunate enough to teach the math intervention program. Our program services kindergarten through fifth grade and anyone who tests two grade levels below their current grade level. The program's goal is to basically close the learning gap and improve students' understanding and confidence towards math. The MTSS team and I collaborate with the teachers to identify tier three students. And we use the iReady Diagnostic Screener Test three times a year, as well as their CFAs, the Common Formative Assessments Classroom Standardized Test. And we like to keep things in the communication open to make sure that groups are fluid. The teaching blocks are for 45 minutes, with the exception of kindergarten being for 30. They are top Monday through Thursday. And we make sure that we have small group instruction so that it's explicit instruction. We use the iReady Toolbox Lessons, Math Expressions, RTI, scaffold of lessons as well. We use Paradeck and Math Prep. We also, my favorite is the hands-on manipulatives, which are really helpful for the students to see and understand and to have certain strategies explained to them concretely. We progress monitor bi-weekly and we use the iReady Toolbox, quizzes, math assessments, and growth monitoring and math expressions, quizzes and tests as well. It is my belief that students can become mathematically proficient given the right opportunity, the tools, and the right strategies to be successful in math. I'm also grateful for this program because it allows us to support all of our students and promote their success.
Thank you to Rosie. And here you can see our tier three data. So this, this is the data coming in from the kids that we serve, serve this year. In math, we served over 68 kids in that tier three realm. We're ending the year with only one student who is in tier one, I mean, tier three instruction. In ELA, we service 71 students and we're ending the year with 11 students in tier three. So yes, phenomenal work. I've been just, I've been in this profession a long time and from the bottom of my heart, I, it's been a joy to work with these professionals. They take their jobs so seriously. When we meet on a weekly basis and we are struggling with solutions, they truly dig in and problem solve to create some out-of-the-box solutions to meet the needs of our kids. They're just extraordinary professionals. And our next.
Does this data include special education students?
Tier three kids, our overall data that you saw with the iReady, those did include our, our special education students in both SAI and SDC. However, our tier three does not include special education students. Our next commitment was with that goal of continuous improvement. And we really focused on two areas of continuous improvement this year. Here, I'm highlighting our instructional coach as well as our technology TOSA. And one of the things that I loved about the model that we used this year was really having our own experts go in and work with our team to refine their craft. Our team at Top of the World is such a dedicated team of really learning to love what they do and wanting to seriously commit to improvement. I don't think I've ever seen a team take their job so seriously and being dedicated in making sure that the kids experience success. When we look at our coaching model, you on any day may see Mary Ann in a classroom co-teaching. You may see her on a weekly basis in a PLC meeting, looking at data, helping with forming groups, helping with pulling programs to be able to match needs to instruction. Or you may see Carrie Rebey meeting with a group of teachers at what we call a meet-in geek during lunchtime on their voluntary time, learning about edge of protocols that help to engage or gamify or even assess our students in the moment so that our teachers can turn on a dime as they're instructing kids to make sure that they're getting the most of them in the classroom. Here, you're going to see some of our work in action, some pictures. In fourth grade, we used our Spiro bolts to create shapes and find their perimeters. We conducted an experiment to learn about friction. We conducted an experiment to learn about friction using different flooring and covers for the Spiros to integrate with their science units. In fifth grade, we used the Spirobots to model the phases of the moon. And then those kids taught that to their younger buddies. We also looked at the revolution of the Earth around the sun, again, integrating that technology into steam. And one of my favorites was using the Spiro volts to have our fifth graders race to identify the states in our campus map in our lunch area. I think that was me trying not to trip over them. They were having a lot of fun. The next area is really where our teachers are focusing in on that continuous improvement for our students. So one of the things we did this year was focus in on data analysis on our cycles of summative assessment. So after we gave the iReady assessment, our teachers really looked at all of their, their summative assessments to identify trends and needs for our students. This is where Mary Ann may have come in to work with them to highlight some of that. You'll see the cycle where they looked at each of their groupings to identify where the kids were. And then on the next steps, they started to brainstorm causes for what was happening with instruction. What were they doing well? And where could they improve their instruction to meet the needs of their kids? And then finally, you'll see that our teachers would develop an action plan in order to really hone in on that instruction to guarantee that students were improving. And finally, you'll see our focus on relationships. And I wanted to focus on two, those two areas of relationships. One is that integration of relationships with the world around us, how we apply curriculum and instruction to everything we see around us to make it relevant for students. We're blessed to be funded, well-funded by our PTA to have a garden program where our kids actually do hands-on lessons in our garden that are integrated with science and technology and arts. I put a picture of one of our favorite lessons in our kindergarten classrooms. I chose that one because I don't think I could have even done that watercolor. But they were studying some root plants and I came in and actually tasted the plants. And then we saw some of our artistic kids do this rendition that was just beautiful. We also are very proud of our ability to be able to connect with our communities. You'll see Beth Sand there participating in some of our beloved community festivals and singing and applying their learning within the community. And then you'll see the relationships that we have with others such as our SROs. This is Officer Ashley. We can call on Fred and Ashley at any time to hand out birthday pencils on campus or perhaps give a cybersecurity lesson to students who may need a little extra help in reminding themselves what they need to be doing with their Chromebooks, to decorating their car with student council and having that visibility on campus is very appreciated. And then Dr. Valoria, I sent this picture to him and I just said, this is just you in with our kids and I love that picture. But I think this is representative of just the district team that we have, all of our directors and our executive cabinet members who really care about what we do. They have their finger on the pulse of what we do at our schools. They're opening car doors, they're interacting with students and they're coming up to give us a hug when we need it, when we're sad. I appreciated when we heard the news of Mr. Duddy, they were right there. And I thank you for that support that you gave us. We appreciate it. And finally, you're going to hear from our Top of the World kids. I think I'll miss that the most amongst just the relationships as I'm transitioning to El Moro next year. I wanted to thank everyone, our board members, our leadership team, LaBufa, CSA, students, parents. Thank you for letting me feel the love at Top of the World and serve with you this year. Any questions?
Principal Hatchell, I was going to make a comment though, that thank you for this presentation to the board. Definitely at the board governance level. Could feel the pride you have in the school and the fact that you're committed to the pillars of the district, right? And you can just see it in what you just presented. And you really care about kids, like it always comes through. It's the growth mindset, the ability for you to see the big picture and then connect with them, you know, connect things back to them. I was fortunate to see you in a recent MTSS meeting and great, just amazing question. So, and, and feedback. So we have all of our gratitude for you and we're hoping the transition to El Moro is smooth. We know that you're going to be Mr. Top of the World and they're going to embrace you when you're there. It's so sad. And I don't know if fellow board members want to make a comment. I'm trying not to cry this time.
I love your green dress. You have had amazing results and I love the way you've met so many students' needs creatively. It's just been outstanding. Thank you.
I think you'll be ready to transition to El Moro and I think you'll find the same at that school that you find with the enjoyment of the students and the, and the staff and the parents that you found at Top of the World. I'm sure it will be a great experience and I'm looking forward to seeing you there. And thank you for taking that on.
Very good. Okay. Thank you again. This takes us to 7A Information Item Instructional Services. Universal Transitional Kindergarten Plan and Update. And I don't see any members of the public. And so just want to make sure I'm giving the floor. Dr. Mayberry, the floor, sure.
Thank you. Good evening. As part of SB 180 or 130, the state intended to transition the current TK program to universal TK, beginning with next school year, pushing back the enrollment, cut off by two months each year for the next four years, achieving universal TK by the school year 25, 26. We presented information on the expansion of TK at the November 16 meeting as well as the March 10th board meetings. So as a part of this transition to our expansion of the TK program, the CDE California Department of Ed has a template plan that we have to share and present. And so I want to share a short summary of that and some of the work that have a progress update on where we're at at this time with TK as we kind of come to the close of the school year. So if you go to the first slide, this is that, that speaks to that graphic of every, it's a transition of every two months, every year. So that will be full universal TKs, all four-year-olds in four years. And so, or as they can all say in here a little bit later, but are almost five-year-olds. We'll have them all in four years. So if you go to the next slide, this is the overview again of how the state looks at this. They may, you may see them say universal pre-K. They're including all of their programs for before kindergarten. We currently have a special education preschool, Boys and Girls Club has a state preschool. The other ones are not in our community. So we look at that as an umbrella of support services that we provide for students as they get ready for kindergarten. And then the next slide has speaks to the five areas that are in the plan template that the state provided. Vision coherence, this kind of community engagement and partnerships, workforce and professional learning to support them, curriculum instruction assessment, facility services and then operations. So it's kind of broken up in those five areas. So I'll just kind of give a, a very quick overview of those. The first one, vision and coherence on the next slide. We, as you know, we've had TK class over at El Moro for a while where we've, we've hired a teacher over at Top of the World. We're going to have a TK class offered at both next year with a late, they're standalone, they're not doing, some districts will do combos, TKK combos based on that. We're not doing that. This is keeping it, we're keeping it age appropriate with only students of that, of that age. It's a three and a half hour program with our credentialed teachers. And then we're partnering with the Boys and Girls Club to extend that. And so with transportation to support getting to the Boys and Girls Club for afterwards. And then through the ELOP program, which is new this year as well, we're partnering with the Boys and Girls Club to provide nine hours per day of programming for any students that the state qualifies as unduplicated. So that could be students that are economically disadvantaged, could be English learners, students that are more at risk. So we would provide a full day as required by the state. We're doing that partnership with the Boys and Girls Club that we're part of with that so many other things. That part is in progress. Dr. Canenberg has been coordinating a lot of that work to have that ready for the fall for those students as well as other elementary students too. So this is especially important for our young ones. The next one, community engagement partnerships. This is that process that we've been going through this year. We really didn't really, the idea around universal TK really didn't come to the front until November, December. There was talk of it, when, how's this going to look? And so we put together committee to, of mostly teachers, some administrators to start to unpack and look at. We've visited some schools. We've talked to the city of Laguna Beach Boys and Girls Club, trying to collaborate as much as we can to do survey, if you remember back in March with families. And so, so that, that process has kind of led us to here with partnering with OCDE and different things, working with them to get to this point as we kind of wrap up this year and get ready for the fall. The next slide speaks to the workforce recruitment. As I said, we've, we've hired a teacher. So we have a teacher. We're excited to have it at both schools. I know that's something that parents that we surveyed in March were very interested in having one of their local schools. So we're excited to be able to provide that for them. You know, I think that'll continue to grow over time. Right now we do have, we, we have enough students that eat to run, eat to run the one, a class at both. And then we're potentially will be hiring instructional assistants. If numbers get too large, we can have another adult come in there and help and support. So that might come in the summer depending on how many enroll between now and the start of school year. Again, we said earlier, the, the as far as like professional learning, OCDE is always is very supportive. Orange County Department of Education with districts and providing professional learning. So they have some workshops coming up in the summer for principals as well as teachers around TK. A lot of districts have principals who have not had a transitional kindergarten classroom on their school site. They have some training for them. We have our structural coaching program that will support that as well. Fortunately, Tammy Mays, our teacher who's been doing this for many years, like obviously a wonderful teacher leader was on our work group, our leadership group. She's there to provide support and collaboration. We have our professional learning communities as well. And we expect that to obviously expand beyond our district as we typically do, reach out to get good ideas and, and collaborative problem solving with as many people as we can. The next part of the plan talks about curriculum instruction assessments. This slideshow is kind of like the general outline. We, you know, the TK level, they have standards and frameworks, just like all the other grade levels. Kindergarten, sixth grade, 12th grade, algebra, science, like they have, they have standards and everything, just like everywhere else. The preschool ones that we've looked at as well. Ultimately around TK, the piece that we're looking at the most is around social play, giving kids independence, encouraging them for the love of learning. And really that's, that's a big piece that we, that you'll see if you've ever gone into Ms. Mays's classroom. Like the kids just love being there. They love the learning. They love the social play. And then the last piece of the plan talks about facilities and services. So right now it is one classroom at each one. But we think it might be potential up to four classrooms for full implementation. We'll have to see how it grows. Similar to when this started eight or nine years ago with this first TK. It took a little while to get going at school districts. But we, there is certainly a potential up to four classrooms. I'll have, obviously we need to ongoing updating for additional bathrooms and playground areas as we work through different facility master plans. That'll continue to be a topic on there. We've already ordered additional furniture and instructional materials. So that's as in place. The leadership team worked on that, finalizing those orders a couple of months ago. And then we'll have district transportation available to the schools, from the schools to the Boys and Girls Club, back and forth. Whatever parents need, that part is available as it is for everyone else. So, and I think that kind of some, the quick summary of it right there, I'll get that point. Can I open up to? Any questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mayberry. I have just a couple of questions. So to qualify for more instructional assistance, what would the number of students have to be?
This, this year it's 12 for one more year and then it's 10 to one. So if a teacher has like their late start, that's from about 10 to two o'clock. If they have 10 students in there, the teacher couldn't, doesn't have an instructional service. Once it got to 13, we would have to add one. If it's at six, obviously we don't have to. So we're kind of waiting to see how that plays out either at this two schools that each have. I, I think it's at, at Top of the World, I believe it's the morning one that's larger and El, and El Moro, the afternoon one's larger, maybe it's vice versa. But so we're kind of monitoring that as people sign up and finish all the registration to see where we would potentially add someone to support them.
Is it? Can we take into consideration the nature of the students if some have more needs than others?
Well, we'll, we'll support, either way, we would support them if there's any special needs that they might need or into, you know, talk about the MTSS program or if students have IEPs. So we would have additional staff to support them if there are specific needs. But I would say on the instructional assistance side, they're there to help keep that, you know, those little four-year-olds to support, right? The centers and the different play. And it's one thing to put them into a group and walk away, but when they're four, right? They need that extra adult support.
Yeah, I can imagine it might be a struggle to keep 10 in line. So as far as construction, are we, are we looking at two right now? Are we going to build four and hope they come? Or how's that work?
I can jump in on that. Currently the architects are still in planning. So we've finished our, where you see the enrollment projections for TK. As we see the numbers come in next year, we're going to see what that turns into before you start planning permanent facility improvements. Right now, as Dr. Mayberry said, we're looking at possibly up to four, four rooms. So that's what we're preparing for. But until we get the numbers solidified a bit more, we're not going to finalize the plans to submit to the state architect for that.
Okay, good. And then just one more. How does this work with the program at the Boys and Girls Club as far as their kind of preschool program with a lot of the English learners?
Well, their program would be the same, their preschool program is the same, same as what we would potentially have with just younger age, right? And so RTKers, so we will, we may have English learners, we may have students with IEPs, whole different, all the different things kids bring to the table. When we meet with Boys and Girls Club, they have age-based groups set up there that the students would go into. Their preschool program would likely be happening while our TK program's happening. And then after, after they go there, after their days are over with us, it's tend to be more social play, but that's age-based.
Okay, thanks.
Would they be going to the Canyon brand to the Boys and Girls Club or at Bluebird Park?
It'll be at the Canyon.
And of the people that you talked to earlier this year, how much indication was it they would use our transportation as opposed to bringing their kids themselves? Or did you touch, did you touch on that?
I don't recall the exact number, but I wanted to say about, if I remember correctly, about half of them were interested in transportation to continue to be able to stay longer. I think that was one of the biggest feedbacks, right? Was not just having it at both schools, but also be able to, working parent can get their kid, pick their kid up Boys and Girls Club or wherever it ends up at. So at that time, wherever it ended up at.
Thank you.
I'm interested in the transportation and what plans you have as far as for these four-year-olds, as far as how you're, if we, if we're transporting them, what, what the plan is.
We currently do already transport our TK students. So it would be building on that existing transportation. It's a, the same size bus, just a lot smaller bodies that fill it up. And we anticipate that would be the case going forward.
And no special people are on the bus. They, they're just, they just go on their own with the bus driver.
General home to school transportation.
Hi, Mr. Dixon. Do we have a plan for the temporary classroom at TOW? Like, do we have a location picked out? And the bathroom, access to the bathroom figured out yet for fall? Not for the, okay.
Yes. And, and we have already made a modification. Thank you to Mr. Zeta for shrinking one of our adult-sized toilets to a very Yes, and, and we have already made a modification, thank you, to Mr. Zeta for shrinking one of our adult-sized toilets to a very small child-sized toilet.
A small potty?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I had two more questions. If any other board members have questions, I don't want to monopolize the time. This is for Mr. Conlon on the workforce recruitment. There's a couple of questions that are required for us to answer on the template that caught my eye about recruiting and building ECE workforce. It sounds like we already hired the person. So my question is, did we have any problem finding a qualified pool of candidates with the right credential and the right 24 units of the ECE? And then fast forwarding when we come to 25, 26, and we need either four or six teachers. I know we usually don't have a hard time having a lot of qualified teacher candidates to pick from, but I'm just curious if that was represented in this particular position.
Yeah, I could say we get at least 25 to 35 individuals that applied, candidates that were highly qualified that applied, that met, met the criteria. And it was, it was, it was a very deep pool. So it's exciting knowing that, looking out and as we add, add, you know, in the coming years. And there's also, I know there's a number of programs that are really pushing the program to get the 24 ECE units. So we're gonna see in a relatively short amount of time, from what I've seen, a year, year and a half, three, we're gonna get, get those units in. So I'm, I'm confident we'll continue to have a highly qualified pool of candidates.
Okay, so it would be feasible to think we could tap into some of the other workforce development that's going on in the county versus being able to, or needing to do it ourselves? Okay, great. President Norman, do you have any other questions before I ask a third? Okay. On the PD offered over the summer, do we know yet whether any of our administrators are interested in attending? That I, I know we have TK at one site, but do we have administrators or other people that aren't here in the room that are interested in attending that type of stuff?
Orange County Department have just finalized it. So like, I actually sit in my inbox right now in draft form to send out to them. But I would expect we'll have interests, especially for our new principal, up at the top of the world. So, but in, in our teachers, I think, you know, it's, what's nice about something like this, where everybody in the county and the state's doing it, is there's gonna be a lot of opportunities for professional development that weren't there just a year ago. So I, I mean, I think even somewhat, our current TK teacher is gonna want to do it because she's gonna get to be around colleagues and network and connect in a way that she hasn't had that focus around TK in quite a while.
Okay, yeah, that's great. And just knowing from an administrative perspective, what it looks like when you go into a room that right now is five-year-olds, but by a couple of years, will be mostly four-year-olds. Okay? And then in the template, it didn't come up in specifics in your presentation, but in the template, one thing that caught my eye was on assessments. And there's a bunch of questions where we say, will we do this? Yes. Will we do this? No. And I wanted to encourage instructional services or the administration that's overseeing the actual sites implementing TK to consider different assessment tools, especially as we transition more towards a classroom of four-year-olds versus a classroom of five-year-olds. Because we marked on there that we were gonna use like a standard report card, grade level benchmarking. And in preschool, there's a lot of other options. There's teaching strategies gold, which I've had personal experience with, which is fabulous. There's a DRDP. And what's interesting about those is that young children's development is very uneven. And you can really kind of map social and academic, gross and fine motor, a whole bunch of domains all on top of each other, which is slightly different than what I would call the standard K through 12 report card is. So it just doesn't want to overlook the opportunity to potentially tap into other assessment tools. So that was just something I caught probably down the road. But it was, yeah, really good question. So it's in the template document and I think it was maybe on eight or nine, Jan, I can, Vickers, I can let you know it was the focus area that Dr. Mayberry talked about, the assessment area. Which one was that? Was it B or C?
D, I believe.
No, D. Yeah, I think it must be D, then let me just scroll down. Yeah, page eight. Yeah. So, you know, a lot of them are observational assessments that are really, really helpful with, with young children. Exactly what you saw them do. Could they kick the ball or could they just tap the ball, things like that?
Sure that Tammy could provide a lot of input with what she's been doing the last few years and, and the tools that she uses. Thank you all for the questions and thank you for the wealth of information. Thank you for hiring and thank you for facilitating, Mr. Dixon. I mean, you guys are a team, so thank you so much for all that, all the great questions and helping that guidance. So we appreciate it and, and thanks for the updates and remember Clerk Osborne, thanks for those questions that were in the updates, right, that you asked. So really appreciate it. It helps us all learn and grow. And next, we're moving to 8A. It's action item, approval of Laguna Beach Unified School District Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP for the year ending June 30th, 2023. There is no one in the audience to speak to this item, so Dr. Mayberry, the floor is yours.
Thank you. A draft of the Local Control Accountability Plan was brought to the Board of Education for Public hearing on June 2nd, last week, 2022. We have not received any additional recommendations or comments in the public regarding goals, actions, expenditures, and the LCAP since the public hearing. So tonight, we are bringing it forward for your approval consideration. Thank you.
Just a quick reminder. Members that we can't add things to the LCAP that require collective bargaining, as that need needs to be done through negotiations. And, sorry, I just lost my page on there. And I know Jan last time really helped remind us, and so we all just need to be mindful of that as we, as we ask questions. And for stakeholders listening at home, collective bargaining is a negotiation of contracts between employees and employers to determine terms of employment, including pay, benefits, hours, leave, job, health and safety, and balance of work and family and more. And I appreciate the association's patience when sometimes we forget, and I always appreciate Jan for reminding us. And any questions for Dr. Mayberry before we move to a motion where we can then have discussion?
So is this the time that we can make comments? I know we couldn't last time, but are we allowed to make comments?
After, so, yeah, so governance would be whenever there's an information item, we have questions. And then when we have a motion, we have comments, because comments normally lead into discussion. And because of open meeting laws, we can't have a discussion without a motion.
But last time, we had a motion and we couldn't have it.
We don't have a motion as an information item.
Oh.
Would you like me to move the item?
So I have a question then.
Well, then there's been a motion too, so you can make a question and comment.
I'm, I'm allowed to ask it now?
See, you're, it's the same thing for every action item and every information item. It doesn't change. Information items are the same. We ask questions, action items, we, after a motion, we make comments.
So if we, if we wanted to make a change, can we ask for an MOU? With the bargaining unit?
That would be part of our collective bargaining, so.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I understand it's part of collecting, collective bargaining. Can we ask for an MOU?
But all collective bargaining is done in closed session. We can't, yes, everything that has to do with collective bargaining.
We've asked for MOUs not during collective bargaining before. We've had them brought up. Yeah, I'm just asking if we could.
President Norman, when is our next closed session so that we could properly discuss this in the right format?
The next meeting.
Okay. So if it's related to collective bargaining and personnel, it would definitely be a closed session item. So I would love to hear what you want to present. I just want to make sure that we're doing it in the correct format.
Okay.
And we'd have, it sounds like we have another meeting eminently.
Okay.
Okay, we have three this month?
Okay. So, yeah, so it'll have to be discussed in closed session. Is there, are there any other questions and comments related?
Comments, but not questions. I'll wait till the comment time.
This is the comment time. Once there was a motion in a second, then.
Okay, okay, thank you. So for comments, I know that the LCAP is our basic basis for expenditures, and it's really important. We have to do this for the federal government. And so I think it's, we need to be really careful and make sure we have everything in here. On our first goal, develop college and career readiness skills through meaningful collaboration. I think that we're missing some big areas. Number eight, where it says expand career education and CTE learning at elementary and middle school level, including opportunities for design thinking and makerspace learning. I know that Capo has 14 middle schools. We have one. We're all together in CTE. We are the only school, middle school, that doesn't have a CTE investigation lab. The other schools have had them for about five years. I met with David Kneist, who is from the Department of Ed, and he's in charge of CTE grants. And he would love to give us money for that. He's very eager to do that and get us started on a, an investigation lab so that our middle school kids can explore. Most of them have 14 different areas that they explore. Everything from video production to robotic arms, to silk screening, to drones. I know I got to see boys do an obstacle course with the drones and talk about how they're used for fire management. They have flight simulator for middle school. And then you can go on at the high school level. And in fact, one of our parents said she's driving her son to go to the high school one. One of our girls got accepted into pilot school from doing that. Lovely young girl named Julia showed me her embroidery machine and how she programmed that. The kids, now I've gone to visit a number of these labs. The kids are all really engaged. And of course, some of the schools had difficulty finding a space. But they've all figured it out within the last five years. And they all, they've all figured out staff for this. I, I would love our middle schools students to have the same opportunity as if they lived in Dana Point or Elisevier or Laguna Niguel. And talking to parents about this, they're, would very much like for their students to have access to these programs and be able to try lots of things. They find out a lot by what they like and what they don't like. And when they get to high school, some of our, some of our programs are four years long, some are three. So it really helps them gear for high school. And so I think we should really be looking at having an investigation lab like others. I mean, the money's there. And I know we've talked about it for years. I know, it just doesn't happen. I know we're getting a couple more, some machinery at Thurston, and that's a step. But it's not, it's not like being able to investigate all these different careers. Okay, silence. So nobody wants that for our kids. Okay, I'll go into my next one.
About, I didn't hear a question. You said you had a question. I was waiting for the question.
I said I had a discussion. I was wondering if people were interested in this, but it didn't sound like it.
I'm very interested. I think what you're talking about is excellent.
Oh, okay. I thought it was, move on.
No, I was, I was just, I, I thought, one is, I don't even know what page you're on. I'm trying to find the page that you were talking about where you want to add it. And secondly.
Adding it right at.
On what page?
Number, the number one, the develop college and career readiness. Yeah, Jan's right, section four, number eight.
It's under the goal, goal one, right? Develop college and career-ready students. It's under one of our LCAP goals, goal number one. Okay. Is there any further history that anybody would be willing to share on potential investigations that we've done on a CTE lab? And when we're saying CTE lab, that sounds a little too generic, because it seems like we have labs that do different types of things, like maybe medical lab. We have multimedia labs. It seems like there's a lot of different types of labs.
Yeah, they just, that's what they call it, Career Technical Education Labs, Exploratory Investigation Labs.
More of an umbrella term?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it, is it similar to forensic? Is that what you're saying by investigating, or it's investigating different pathways within CTE?
They're investigating different careers, different pathways.
Okay, so how do we investigate those things now, careers and pathways? I know we are.
In middle school.
Yeah, how do we do it now? But what are you looking, are you looking to replace what we already have for careers?
When I ask about this, my understanding was that we, there is physical limitations as far as to build out a lab. And I may have this wrong, but I thought that's what I was told, because I was really excited when I saw all these other districts having all this money and all these great labs. And I want to know, why don't we have them? And I thought that's what I was told.
And are these, are these programs like the other ones where students can travel to them as well? They're open to everyone in, within the joint venture?
No, these programs are only open to the middle schools if they're a middle school.
So it's during the bell schedule, not outside of the bell schedule? So we're talking about changing the bell schedule from the board, exchanging the bell schedule?
I'm not talking about changing the bell schedule. I'm just talking about offering this for students. And it can be during the bell schedule.
Right, but this seems to me as something we would do during the evaluation. So we give evaluation, we close up the year, and then we go and put in a goal that has to do with offering more CTE. And that's not ours to facilitate, but maybe the outcome would be, and then we help to find the goals and the outcomes, but not create, replace what we have without more information about what that is, what's working, what's not working, and what does CTE have? And allowing administrators to.
Well, have our administrators gone to see these programs?
That's why it would be part of goals, is what I meant.
But I mean, we've been around for five years.
I didn't see that, sorry.
Okay, so we're aware of the programs that CCA has. We've seen them. Like we said, like obviously we have limitations on space. There's no empty classrooms here at this time, right? But currently, and we've had these for a long standing time. In the wheel, there's what they call STEAM lab. You call it CTE, you call it STEAM lab. It's the same type of exploration. There's video production. We also offer three foreign languages, world languages. I don't think there's any other middle schools that offer with three world languages at the middle school level. So there's a lot of opportunity for that. And I think to your point, like I think we want to continue to expand that, right?
Yeah, it's a much smaller level than 14 stations they get.
Exactly. And if you're, if you go into our STEAM labs, that's what you'll see. You'll see, we have 3D printing here, we have screen printing, we have all that, right? We have theater, we have music programs, we have chorus, lots of opportunities for kids to explore their interests. And so, but we have been in contact with CCA on this and Patty Romo and working through like what are different opportunities? Can we set up potentially a trailer? Is this something that can go to class? So definitely, to your point, something that's, that's an action that's in here to continue to expand it and find the right fit. You know, adding something, rearranging the classrooms, you know, anytime the last three years during the pandemic. But wouldn't, wouldn't it be something that I would recommend? Now that we're coming, hopefully coming out of that, I think we want to continue to expand beyond our STEAM labs, behind our world language, our music, our VAP programs that we currently have in the middle school. You know, that could be a mobile unit, because I know CCA has different mobile units that they've used. That could look at a lot of different ways. We have the outdoor learning, the guarding spaces here. So there's lots of flexibility to that and how we want to set that up and fit it within all the different opportunities they already have. And so, but it's definitely, that's why it's in here. It's an action to continue to, to look into that and continue our discussions with Patty Romo or, well, now that she's retiring, but with CCA in that area to see what other opportunities might be available for kids. So, yeah.
I, I see our lab as a small, kind of a baby version of this. And so I, I would like our kids to have. And so I, I would like our kids to have those opportunities too. And I've been talking about this for five years.
Right.
Laid off during COVID.
Well, but I think to kind of circle back, the initial issues we had were, we didn't have any CT authorized teachers at the middle school. So we couldn't add a CTE lab and have CTE expenditures, uh, when we didn't have, uh, teachers that were CTE authorized. So, uh, five years ago, what I offered to the principal at the time was $50,000 of enhanced budget money to buy, um, kits like what we are referencing and seeing because we didn't have access to CTE dollars at that time. So I know several of the staff members did take us up on that, including, uh, Ms. Martinez bought some extra kits to try some things out. I think, um, what you're requesting is actually that we, um, create a specific class for this. Um, at this juncture for next year, that would, would not be something we could do. We, kids have, have picked their electives. We have our wheel. And as Dr. Mayberry mentions, I think we have, um, we have a lot of, uh, different ways of, of approaching this, not the same way necessarily as, um, as the, uh, schools in Capitano have done. So if, if the goal is still what it is, and which is what, uh, indicates in the plan, which is to expand our offerings, which we, we will continue to do. And we now have, um, uh, an additional teacher that's has, I believe, or is close to getting their CT authorization, which will give us a little more opportunity to do that, which is our goal and has been our goal is to continue to expand. So now we do have one CT, one CTE teacher. We'll have two. And we have been looking at our, um, our pathway to determine what are those options and opportunities to expand. And I think that's what the goal and action is that's set out, uh, not necessarily specifically is, as you call out with the 14 different, uh, stations or whatever it might be. But I think, um, our goal is to do it the way that we can do it best with, uh, with our students and with our staff, based on the electives that we currently have, right? So, um, that, that is our goal. That is our plan. And that's, uh, how we're going to continue to move forwards next year. So.
When I talked to the state about our issues with space and teachers not being, uh, having a CTE certificate, they said 14 other schools figured it out. Why can't Laguna?
And as I just referenced, we have figured it out. We've been working on it. Uh, if you were to go next door into Mr. Chris's room, you'll see a lot of the same things that are probably happening and Capo happening in his room. As, uh, Dr. Mayberry pointed out, you see the same things in our steam labs. So just because we don't follow the same model as those 14 other schools, doesn't mean that we're not doing it. And so, um, you know, I recognize that it doesn't look necessarily the same way, but nothing that Laguna does i- is going to be the same way. That's something we've prided ourselves on is actually looking and finding ways to do things that benefits our students and with our staff. And I have full faith in my staff that they will be able to do this, uh, continue to do this. And that's the role that, uh, that we're trying to work for. Um, but again, the board wishes to add more specifics. You know, on that, uh, we can, um, I just recognize that it's something that we are trying to work on and, and, um, have done. In fact, uh, a lot of work around, uh, CTE, um, here. We have a declining enrollment challenge. I think we all recognize that. So trying to figure out how to do an elective wheel with all the different things our students enjoy and take part in. This is not something that all students also get exposed to at all those school sites. It is an elective wheel and a pathway within. So again, similar to what we want to do is expose students. We've made a lot of changes to our electives in order to do that. In our wheels, we've made some edits to that and that's something we, um, again, appreciate the teachers for having that flexibility. Going to this next year, we'll continue that, that momentum and, and continue to look for expansion as those opportunities allow.
Could we at least look at the top labs that students think are the most important to them at those middle schools? And see if we can provide those?
Those are, those are ongoing conversations that we always have, but we're touching base with Patty Romo or in CCA is, what do you see as, you know, kids interested in, whether it's middle school, elementary, high school? Where we meet with her regularly, her and her team regularly to look through that. So, yeah.
I also wanted to add it in this, if it's okay, if I can make a comment real quick. The way this reads, I like the way it reads because it says expand career education and CT learning at the elementary and middle school level. Last year I saw a lot of, um, interesting stuff, even at the elementary, right? All those career talks and that was different. And it looked different than it did at some of the other sites and their levels. But it seems like your, your issue is really here at the middle school. And, um, even outside of the elective wheel, I think there could be some interesting things happening in career pathways. Maybe there are field trips, maybe there are speakers. So sometimes it doesn't have to be, how do we fill classes and build labs? But it can be really interesting career education where their, their field trips or their guest speakers. And so I do like seeing the latitude, knowing that, you know, we're in touch on those different types of labs or a new lab we might want to have in the future. But there's a lot of creative ways to get kids excited about careers in middle school. And keeping it different maybe isn't a bad thing, you know, so that when they get into ninth grade and they see all those fun, um, classes that they can take, that that's something new and different. Um, so just a viewpoint.
Yeah. And one of the things that we are trying to do, um, looking at our after school programming is we know our students are kind of limited on what they can take, obviously within the regular bell schedule. So what are those options and opportunities to expose students to things outside of the bell schedule? So that's something that I know, um, Joe has been looking at, trying to find a way to, um, you know, look at, uh, extended learning opportunities, whether it's robotics, um, you know, we've had forensics as after school. We've had music as an after school. So really looking at ways to partner with, whether it's school power or just doing it ourselves, ways to give our middle school students more options. That would include, uh, potential exposure to things they can't get if they're in the foreign language pathway. For example, if a student decides to go down that pathway, they wouldn't be, you know, provided opportunities to access the CTE pathway. So how do you do that? Well, I think the important piece is that it's embedded in your science classrooms as well. It's embedded in your social science classrooms. And I think that's something we've been working towards and, um, trying to find ways to bring in the career speakers and that exposure to, to the students. So, you know, we, uh, we've added a few things around that and our, I know our science teachers at the elementary, um, have been using some of the, the things that we have, you know, purchased to expose students to different scientists. And I think, you know, one of the rooms we go into actually, you know, there's a, a lot of different scientists, engineers that represent all sorts of, uh, different folks. And that's, that's our goal, right? Is that exposure piece of it. So, you know, as I, it's kind of started out earlier, I think the key is that, um, you know, we look for those opportunities as a small school district and small school, to expose students to, to those things that we can do. Maybe not in the traditional sense of, you know, of a Capitano that has, you know, 50,000 students. You know, we've, we have 500 here. So it is going to be, look a little different, um, for us. So, um, but again, you know, staff are prepared to, whatever the consensus of the board direction is.
One of the things that they talked about in there, looking at their data is that their schools are, Capo schools are declining too, just like ours. But CTE has really grown and that really brings in kids. And another thing that I like that they do is they took their, they had their counselors. They took their kids who in their senior year didn't have a direct path. Like kids weren't thinking they were going to college. They weren't thinking they were going into the service. They weren't going to go work for their dad. They just, you know, were undecided. They didn't know what they were going to do. And the counselors, you know, talked to the kids, knew who they were, and they took them on a bus to the adult, the free adult ed programs, which are, you know, EMT, um, uh, working in the pharmacy, the firemen, uh, and showed them all those things. And five of the kids signed up from one school. So I would, I would really like that for our kids that don't know what they're going to do after high school.
And that's one of the recommendations that why we're hiring additional counseling support is, is actually to help students start to see the pathways and understand what's available to them so that you can have a six-year plan coming out of the middle school, that you're charting a path a little bit and having conversations early on around what are your interests? And what are some of those things that are available to you? So taking the EMT class that you can take as a student while in high school. Uh, you know, those are all things that students don't necessarily have access to or know about. And that's what our counselors are there for. So that's why we're looking to expand that so that every student has an opportunity to sit down with their counselor, talk about their interests and create somewhat of a plan. But also, uh, to just get that exposure. So, you know, it's so important they understand what is available to them so that they can, as they navigate and they're, and they change their minds, they're teenagers, um, that they know what's there and, and that, uh, there, they have a relationship with that counselor so that they can say, I'm really interested in making, in, in doing this. Is there anything out there for that? So I think, uh, again, recognizing CTE is an important piece. We've been working diligently and, and we have more folks that are getting our, their CT authorization, which is fantastic. And I, I know that, uh, Mr. Crisp, I think is one of them. And he's very excited to be able to kind of look at what his programming is and continue to evolve that. Uh, the same with our steam teachers as well. So, um, I, I expect that this will be an ever going, you know, uh, ongoing evolution of CTE and, and pathways all the way through our, um, our approach. We've been working with school power on that. That was one of the fundamental needs that we, we did several years ago prior to COVID, was really kind of expanding our career options and opportunities and exposure just to all students. So I know we've made some headway and obviously that, that's why it's a goal. It's going to continue to expand and provide options and opportunities into the middle school and elementary.
That's why my comment would be that I think, I think this addresses what your concern is. Tied with the fact that I'm not comfortable with doing specifics, like a specific program, a specific lab, that I just have, um, the confidence that under this number eight, that our, our folks will look at what's available and what, see what they want to add to our program, what they can add. And Kelly's comments really fall under number six, which is just above that. But again, without specificity. And I know Andy Crisp, as you mentioned, Andy Crisp, he's continually, um, adding to his program and the things that he offers to the students. I can't enumerate all of them, but I know that, that there is a lot going on. So I think just to, just to have the emphasis that that's a very important area. I'm comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable with giving, asking for a specific.
Well, I feel the same way. And we also, we've mentioned, um, steam within, you know, bell cap as well and how important it is. And, you know, the A's for art, like that we're incorporating all the science and technology, math and art all together and engineering. And it has grown so much, um, you know, over these years, starting, I think with engineering class when that first was, teacher wanted to teach engineering and really started creating a change in that. And so I appreciate all of the growth along our professional development, but I don't think at the board level, it's to give those specifically how to do something because that gets into the how. And that's not our role. Our role is, you know, the why, what do we want to do for outcomes and those goals? So.
And what, I was more, why can't we have this for our students? And I, I understand we're working towards something like that and we have some things for our students. I'm just, you know, I'm sorry. I'm just frustrated that we take a long time.
I, I see, as you look at Capo, but then what I see from the board level is I could go to Newport Mesa and come back and say, I want to do what they're doing in Newport Mesa Middle Schools. And that's why I'm saying specifics. I, what I'm saying is I think we have our group here who are always seeking, they're always seeking to enrich what our students have and to meet their needs. And that's why I want to steer away from the, the specific of take, you know, I want this specific thing put in place.
Right.
Because I don't see that as my, as my role. I see the general is, is what my role is.
I was gonna say, we could do the same for OSHA and any other things, but I, and also I don't, I don't have many stakeholders who come to me and say, I want to be like Capo. I mean, no offense to Capo, it's just not, yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I don't, we don't get that as much. We still have very specific things. Someone like, I saw my kids do this or someone else do it and can you guys do that? But, um, I've never heard, I've never heard that in all the years. So.
I'd like to move the agenda.
Next, um, Ben, I'd like to talk about.
Just ask to move. So we need a vote now. So.
We can, but I don't get to talk about the other things on the LCAP?
No, because remember, remember Kelly just asked.
Unless someone seconds it. I thought that, yeah, I'm just concerned about the time and the budget is, I think.
Well, I'm concerned about how important this is and that we should address these.
Well, we need a second first.
So it fails.
Okay, so it fails. Go ahead. It failed.
Okay, um, so for the number two, the foster social, emotional competencies and self-identity. On that one, um, number five, which is partner with local organizations to provide additional support for students beyond the school day. And as part of that is expand student options for counseling support. And I still would like it explained again, why we can't have counselors when students would like them after school.
Because that's something we discussed in closed session.
And can we get, do an MOU for that?
That's something we discussed in closed session.
Okay.
And I apologize again and thank you for your patience.
We're, have to do that to meet those student needs. Now what about for?
Do the student needs are, are being met and they already talked about how they're working on that. But those things from the board level have to be discussed in closed session. They're part of collective bargaining.
Okay, um, so one of the things in this also is to, number nine, develop, continue to develop attendance intervention processes, working on attendance. I know that art is a big part, uh, it's been proven to increase student attendance and engagement as well as mental health. And I'm really happy that we're having an art tosa now. And I wondered why that isn't in here. It's something that we're doing. It's something that is helping with these goals.
Why it's not where?
I think it's just one of the things they, and that number nine on attendance. Prove attendance and one of those would be having the art tosa. That was, I believe that's what she's inferring. I don't think, I don't think.
Or have it here somewhere.
I don't think we missed details in here of how there, there'd be many things under all of these of how they're being addressed and what they're working on to accomplish those. So I think you're.
We have many details in here. Why don't we have the art tosa in here?
The point is that you're pleased that we have that, that, that to me suffices because we wouldn't list everything we're doing here.
I guess I'm just saying, I think that should be under our mental health and our student attendance part. Or I think it should be in here somewhere.
I don't know where you would list that you have toses. We have many toses.
But this is the only art.
Well, that.
Okay, chat.
So, yeah, I mean, this, obviously the plan that's here this evening is, you know, was put together over the data we collected over two years uh, and then approved last year by the board. So a lot of this, you know, one of the things that the goals of this LCAP is that to, to not get into too specific of things so that there's room, flexibility, right? So if something changes, we have the flexibility that falls within something that we're doing because so many people were not reading these prior. So there, there is some level of like, we're trying not to get too specific into this as a whole, across the whole state. Because then it gets, then you tend to like, have to, there's not flexibility in what you can and can't do. That said, like the visual performing arts falls within goal one under, it's a standards, right? So, uh, does it help attendance? Absolutely. Right? So, um, so does, so do sports. So do a lot of things, right? And so, and that's what our team, intervention team looks at, right? They're always trying to find that personal connection to kids, that personal, what motivates them, what makes them want to come to school. So why we always look at, one of the things we look at is around, you know, connecting to students. Are you connected to an adult, right? Could we connect to a program? So, um, to your point, like, I think that is something that we're always looking for those tips, whether it's art, sports or anything like that, that can get kids to want them to be here and be engaged. Cause that, that's, uh, obviously one of our highest priorities, have kids here on campus and safe.
It's actually, yeah. So it's called out in 1.1 where it talks about, uh, differentiate learning opportunities for all students that facilitate meaningful collaboration. The force is, uh, that talks about staffing, uh, staffing and Vapa, obviously steam. So that, you know, again, for not getting into the specifics around, um, you know, putting in an art tosa, which we've already, we've had the art tosa for, for many, many years. It's just this year, uh, we've shifted to, uh, a full-time for the next two years. So, um, again, you know, it wasn't in there previously. It really is covered. And if you think about all the different support folks that we put into place, they get covered under, uh, typically a lot of it's going to go one, um, around teaching and learning specifically. Cause that's really kind of the, the, the kind of catch all for that one. But, um, again, that is where you would find, um, you know, that is our, our area of focus there. So.
Remember Perry, I see it under one, the develop college career readiness actions. Little I, and then that very first bullet, coordinate staffing to facilitate rigorous student learning. Little I, and then that very first bullet, coordinate staffing to facilitate rigorous student learning in humanities team, physical and health education, BAPA. So it's like one of the first things actually that's mentioned in our entire LCAP. So are we good with that piece? Okay, all right. Jim doesn't need to move. Okay.
No additional questions? Okay. May I have a student provisional vote, please?
Aye.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Did you say aye, de? I'm sorry. And the reason, for the reason for abstention? If you're abstaining, you just have to provide a reason. You just have to have a reason to abstain. You just have to provide a reason.
Is it why you're voting? No, but abstention has very specific requirements. If you're going to abstain, you have to have left the room for the whole discussion.
A conflict, that's what it is, a noticeable conflict. Okay. Yeah, exactly. Right. Okay. So the motion passes for one. Sounds like not abstain. Oh, I'm so sorry, Jan.
Say to Chad that we had such an outstanding thorough presentation on the LCAP at the last meeting. I know you couldn't be here, but it was, really gave us a tremendous amount of information. It was very thorough. Thank you.
And, and in echoing that, as well as all of the information you provided in the updates, you know, to prepare us for it so that we're not just getting the 95 pages all at once, but you're, you know, solely providing it, your team so that we can, you know, build up and ask questions along the way and understand it. So really appreciate it. So look forward to all its achievements. Any other comment before?
I like that we have these goals for three years because I feel like as a board, we're really getting to know goal one, goal two, goal three, and even when we have a 95-page document to somehow navigate around that we can usually find things that we know are some of our goals within that. So I'm really thankful for the three-year cycle.
I'm glad you're in the midst of it. So this moves us to 9A, the approval of resolution 2207. Education protection account EPA. There's no one in the audience to speak. So Mr. Dixon, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is an annual requirement for the education protection account to pass a resolution that identifies an expenditure plan for the coming fiscal year. As a reminder, EPA, as the acronym is called, was established in 2012 by the voters via Prop 30. There was, at the time, a significant threat of a reduction in education funding to which the voter were asked to not allow the cut in funding as proposed in the state budget. Subsequently, that passed and was extended via Proposition 55. And that will extend through 2030. For us in our district, the funding is based on demographics and the minimum per average daily attendance is $200 per student, which is what our budgeted amount is the amount we receive. And that's what you see here. As far as the planned expenditures, they must be spent on classroom instruction. And you can see in the provided report, all of them are in the function code of 1,000s, which is all classroom instruction. So it's just classrooms and instructional costs for their salaries. And that's it. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions from the board.
Mr. Dixon, he reminded, this is the one where as your income increases, your percentage of tax increases, correct? It only starts at a high level and then it just goes up as your income goes up.
No, this is for us, the funding for the EPA is specifically the minimum amount for the district, $200 per student.
I meant Prop 55, sorry.
Oh, correct. Yes, on the highest income earners, yes.
Yeah, it's on the highest income and then it grows as you. Okay, any questions? May I have a motion? Thank you. And this is, any discussion? This resolution, so. Could I get the student provisional votes first? Thank you.
Clerk Osborne.
Yes.
Member Kelly.
Yes.
Member Perry.
Yes.
Member Vickers.
Yeah.
President Arndt.
Yes, motion carries five zero. And this moves us to 9B, the approval of the 2022, 2023, all funds final budget. There's no one in the audience. Mr. Dixon, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just the information is the same as was presented on June 2. And we haven't received any questions or comments up to this point. However, just a reminder, the budget is dynamic. It is a living document. And as the state finalizes their negotiations prior to June 15, hopefully, we know that there's going to be changes next year in the assumptions, which is why we have the budget process, beginning with our first interim and then second interim and then the updates that we provide throughout the year. So that we have to take any questions on the budget as presented.
Mr. Dixon, is TK its own object code or otherwise separatable?
It is. We, in our district, we use what are called cost centers. And those are unique in other districts and the standardized account code you can call also called goals is another option that districts have used for their code, but we use cost centers.
And what's the cost center for TK?
I have to get it off. I don't have it memorized. Come to my head. I have a person in my office who does, but I can put that in the weekly update.
Thanks.
Are there any additional questions before we have a motion and then we can make comment, discussion, have discussion?
I was just going to say it's well presented, well done, and very informative.
May I have a motion? Second. Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? I just want to say when the LCAP was first came into place and all of that discussion around it, that the school boards is instrumental in ensuring that the budget, you know, works with the LCAP. And it was just that tie together that I think is so beneficial. So that you can see LCAP is the tool to really understand that the debt of the budget to make sure we're closing gaps. We're having the best outcomes for all students. And so I really appreciate the fact that how you guys work together. So, thank you. Thank you for making it easy to read there. Fist bump. Okay. And with that, student provisional vote? And all in favor? Motion carries five zero. And now we're going to move on to 10A, which is the consent calendar. There's no one in the audience to speak to it. So we'll go to 10B. Do any members wish to comment or ask a question on consent item, but not pull an item for board discussion or separate vote? I see none. Then may I have a? Oh, go ahead, Dee. Was there? Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
I, I just wondered under the procedural where it says live and electronic submission. We really only have electronic submission, don't we?
Which item? I'm sorry.
One. Procedurally.
Oh, you meant procedural A. Say, say again. Yeah. So if someone was here, they would speak. If someone was here, they'd speak to it. I'd open for public comment. Every, every action item has public comment associated with it. Every information item has, only that doesn't is reports.
Okay.
So that they would speak to it, but no one's here to speak to it.
Okay, okay. So it's live when they're here. It isn't. I know they can't call in.
Yeah, yeah. Otherwise, and you know what? And thanks for saying that because I forgot to say that there was no public comment on the web form we had either. I meant to say that at the beginning of the meeting, I forgot. So thank you for bringing that up. And so there was no comment on consent either. Any other questions on the consent items? Okay. Could I have a motion to approve consent items see through? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Your motion carries five zero. This moves us to 11, governance action. A, approval to cancel the July 13, 2022 board meeting. There's no one in the audience to speak to this on July 2, just last week, board. I typed July. On June 2, 2022, the board reached consensus to add this item to the agenda for discussing, discussion, possible action. One second. Losing my page on the, on my iPad.
I move approval to cancel the July 14, 2022 board meeting.
Thank you. Can I have a second? And then I just have a quick question. So Dr. Gloria, will your, I just want to make sure that the district office would be okay to both be able to take care of all the business. We have multiple meetings this month and in August, as well as making sure that we actually honor the benefits that we provide, which are days off, one of the benefits we provide and to honor that. So I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, we talked about this morning in cabinet. So we do have obviously one more meeting, business meeting this month. We have another closed session meeting at the end of this month as well. But we believe that we would be able to get everything that we need to have on consent at the last meeting in June. So I think we recognize now that with schools starting earlier, with us getting out earlier in June and having two meetings in June and then the meeting in July, we're starting to recognize that we're impacting vacation opportunities for staff to get, actually get away. And so we're having a meeting at that middle point in July actually makes it so that staff potentially only have two weeks to, and you're talking about a large portion of this group being able to try to do it in two weeks, but then how also do we have staff coverage of the district during that time as well? So we try not to all be gone at the same time. So there, if issues arise, whatever it might be. So actually, one of the things that I think we'll bring forward for the board for consideration in December, when we do the organizational meeting, is looking at canceling the second meeting in June and keeping the July meeting this next time around. But simply because of the way this timing is, staff would really request that we consider canceling the July meeting.
Well, I also, I also think with the big loss that we've had, that it's put a different emotional pressure on everyone. So so I'm just proud of you guys for carrying through on all this and getting us through the end of the month. Are there any more comments? If something came up and necessitated it, you can call a meeting. If, as you approach the start of school, I mean, if there's some.
So I'm just wondering, is the June meeting going to be really, really long, the last June meeting?
It will not be really, really, really long. Notice I didn't, I kept really long. Most of the items, no, no, no. Most of, most of the items are consent items. So for example, you're talking contracts. Obviously, we are warrants and payroll that, which is typical in, in, at every meeting. Those are ratifications anyways. So those will, you know, the ones that we do in July, when we have to pay people or whatever it might be, those will come the first meeting in August, which is the second week of August. So no, we will have a little bit of a longer meeting because in that we are going to do kind of a wrap-up presentation on, obviously, the LCAP indicators, excuse me. But also, we want to kind of highlight the areas of focus that we have this year. As really some of the work that, you know, that the board, we set as areas of focus. And that will include, Shelley will have an opportunity in communications to talk a little bit about because that was one of the areas of focus. We pushed that communications plan to be part of that, that larger presentation. It's going to be a group effort. It'll be somewhat of a, of a study session format and that we'll probably add a little bit to the tables here and share some microphones so that we can have multiple people presenting, the directors included. Because everyone had a hand in, in helping to get to the priorities this year, as we always do. But we want to make sure that the school sites, so the principals will be here to help be a part of that. So that presentation will be a little bit longer. But beyond that, I don't expect that the business meeting will be the business portion around consent calendar, et cetera. The consent calendar will make, look longer, but it shouldn't take any longer. So.
I think as long as the business can get done, it's nice to have a break for everybody at this table for a month and have a nice reset and, and four weeks off would be, or more, without being in a board meeting would be healthy for all. So I fully support the concept. I think we have a motion on the floor.
Could I get the student provisional vote, please? Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. And this moves us to item 12. Governance reporting. And Clerk Osborne, where I start with you?
I only have two things to report on. One, I attended on Friday night, the Laguna Beach High School Scholarship Foundation's award ceremony. They had 126 different categories. And prior to the ceremony, I was just really taken back by all of the donors. It was a very, very great group of people that have been involved with that organization for a very long time. And I know it's a long agenda, 126 awards, and some of them go to multiple recipients. So what a great event. And then on Sunday night, I attended the annual School Power trustee dinner. They honored some trustees that have been with them for three terms, nine years that were outgoing and welcomed in. I think three, don't quote me, potentially four additional trustees at a really nice dinner at the outgoing president's home. And that was really nice to see their work. A lot of what they do comes from the relationships they have. So it's, it's really nice to be able to kind of watch them in action, build those relationships. So it was a really nice event and I look forward to all the promotions this week.
I also went to the foundation event. Kelly summed it up very, very nicely. I was so impressed with the young woman who was our alum who talked about our generation who had spoiled the world and that their generation that was sitting there has to solve all these problems and and enlisted social media and all the additional barriers that they have that we didn't have. And I thought she would be a great commencement speaker. I could not have ever. I was glad I wasn't right after her as far as with talking. I was happy to give our, our two scholarships out to two wonderful young women. I was sad to see for the second year in a row that no males had applied for the gay lesbian scholarships. And I'm concerned about that still that I talked, I had got an awful lot of nice feedback from people about this. And I also got a lot of comments about the things that are going on that are kind of painful in the, in the school. I don't know how to address it, but I think we need to be aware of it. Thank you. Oh, and Jan was at there. I can attest that I did see Jan, even though they didn't announce that she was there.
Let's see. I went to an event honoring retirees and also for a tribute to Mr. Daddy. And that was lovely. And I went to the School Power trustee meeting. And we know things are down a bit, but they do such a good job. In that. Sorry. Having money in different pockets and they always make it work out. I spent time with David Kins from the California Department of Ed. We have a great time in the cinematography class and at Capo Valley. And I learned about all the students that have gone on. They have the, the biggest rate of students going on in cinematography to, to Chapman, to USC and to NYU. And so I got to, one of the young women was invited to do the surf competition for women on the North Shore of Oahu. One of the young men just did a great documentary on a blind skateboarder. And so it, it was very exciting to see all that and talk to them. And I also got to talk to a lot of students that were doing all kinds of different projects in one of their many labs. They were, I asked them, I saw these skateboards. I said, oh, did you get to make skateboards? Not this year. We have to take it again next year to make skateboards. We got, but they showed me all the projects that they did get to make that they were quite proud of. So it was good. Thanks. We got, but they showed me all the projects that they did get to make that they were quite proud of. So it was good. Thanks.
Well, I thought the honors convocation is always was great. It was really nice after the two years on Zoom to be back in person and the the donors were most appreciative. And I thought it was, they did a really great job without having Keta Brown provide the dinner. Kind of wondered what was going to happen, but they did. They did cover that really well. Dick Metz is something else, isn't he? He's in his 90s, right? I know. I went to, by happenstance, the library poetry reading. And Mary Blatton was there to support the students that she has that had been picked for their selections. And it was, one of the winners was a granddaughter of Bill and Patty Darnell. And so they were former ceramics teachers at the high school and former kindergarten teacher at El Moro. And so they were very, they have five, five granddaughters and other kids. So that was very exciting to see. And it was very interesting as they got up to like the eighth grade, you got into some very, very almost dark topics at the kids, which I think is really, I don't know what that reflects the last few years or whatever, but it or but they hear on social media, but it was, it was interesting to hear that. And it was again, our teachers go that extra step because you know, when you're see your teacher there Saturday morning at the library to listen to you read your poem. And I wanted to, I was able to tell Mary that we had that in the update on that be brave in her class and to compliment her on that. So that was nice. At the honors convocation, it is Corporal Ashton now, right? Do I have the right? Does I have the right classification? Sergeant? Okay, Sergeant. See, I didn't have it right. For too many years, it was Corporal Ashton, but he came up to me and wanted me specifically to know and to share that they, and you you would know it, Jeff, that they are, he's bringing officers to our campuses at night to take them to the campuses and make sure they know where everything is located. Because we did do that. I think he wanted to reassure that we've done that like originally, but that we they get new officers. And so they're continually addressing that, continually making sure that they know all the locations on on the campuses. I wanted to say that I noticed that Sandra is retiring and I never say her last name right, Ben D'Anidi. Benetini. And I just have been very impressed going back to some times when I sat in on some of those initial meetings of what she's done with that program, what they offer to the parents, not just the kids, but the parents who are often struggling when they have that two year old and they they've never parented before. It's, we don't get trained to be parents in this country. And so it's, it's quite a task to undertake and that learning link, all that she's provided. And I continually to be to be amazed at what we've offered. And so I wanted to to recognize that. And the the last thing is, I know with some of the topic that I know Dr. Kelly brought up last week, but I saw a person's letter to the editor in LA Unified. They have parents sign an agreement that deals with weapons at the start of every school year. And it might be something that we might add to what we look at, which was just things like if you have a gun in your home, that it's it's secured. I mean, I couldn't, I didn't pay enough attention to list them all, but it might be something to think about as far as parent awareness. Because I think that could be a service we could provide to our parents as to, you know, we I'm assuming that we have parents that live in this community that think that there aren't that many weapons in Laguna and they'd probably be surprised. So it's just. I know, I know. And they would have those open houses. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you all. Quick report. I hope everyone is hanging their pride flag. I know we hang ours year round with the BIPOC attached to it. It's a beautiful whole California BIPOC pride flag. And then I am so sad, not that anyone else is, I am so sad that I'm going to miss the 2022 LBHS graduation class because I'm sorry to say, you guys don't plug your ears, they're my favorite class. So far, so far, I've known them since they're babies. They're my favorite class. But I have two graduates this year, which I am so excited about. And our house is all joyful and exciting. And so we have two graduates, so I'm going to miss it. And then I want to thank you, my fellow board members, for all of the work you guys put in for governance and all the things you attend. I don't think people understand like how many things there are to attend and that someone's always there. And so it just, I know it means the world to everyone. And we make a good team. So thank you guys so much for everything you do. And thank you to all of the LBSD staff, all of you for getting our kids over this last little hurdle. Some of them don't want to go, but getting them over. It's been a long year and we are also appreciative of all of you guys and your team. So thank you. Yeah, that's what I say. There's some that don't want to. It's like, I just figured, I want to stay with what I'm doing. We do get those. Hand it over to you, Superintendent.
Just a couple of things. One, we've been tracking, obviously, the lack of TK funding for community funded school districts. Also tracking this transportation conversation. That seems to be something going on at the legislative level where they're trying to figure out from a budgetary standpoint, they've had all sorts of different conversations, but it it's interesting because they talk about funding transportation and they they want to talk about a $1.4 billion price tag. But there's upwards of potentially, you know, in the multi, multi billion dollars. And there's no long term funding mechanism is what they've called out. And of course, community funded districts are once again being left to determine on their own how this might impact them. So it's something that we obviously continue to monitor and work with our lobbyists to highlight that when you have a funding mechanism that excludes community funded districts for something like this, there's a definite potential impact on us. And so we don't know what that looks like yet because we don't know what is actually going to come to fruition. But the the clock is ticking. They have eight days to get a budget together. So for those that have connections to the local legislature, please reach out and remind them that don't forget community funded districts, especially around the TK funding and transportation funding. The other area that we're continuing to focus on, obviously in our county is student childhood mental health. One of the the areas that the school superintendents in our county are continuing to work together on, which somehow I got to be the chair of this group. But I'm working with Dr. Olmstead from the county office. And we're really working as a group to identify ways to support all students in our county around mental health. But I think we all recognize one of the biggest gaps we have is access to mental health for students that need hospitalization, even a short term. You know, we've continued to talk with Dr. Chow about that. And again, maybe a small silver lining with COVID is the fact that we as superintendents have a fantastic relationship with Dr. Chow, meeting with him weekly during the during COVID. We still, I still meet with him weekly, actually, to talk about this issue because this is near and dear to his heart. So we will continue to push. And I think the county supervisors is the is the area that we can push around making sure that there's funding on behalf of students in need for, you know, whether it's hospitalization, brief hospitalization, but also just access. You know, all too often there's a, there's a gap in access that exists. And our goal as county superintendents, as well as a lot of other folks, including Chalk and 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 the county healthcare agency is to improve that so that all students have access. And so that is our goal and working with CalOptima, working with other agencies to kind of roll something forward, hopefully this next fall for all kids in this county. So we're proud of that as I think a group of superintendents that are trying really hard to join together. We all serve different student populations in our county, but they're all kids and they all have needs that we need to work together to meet. So that's my report.
Thank you for being an overachiever, especially for those kids who need, you know, extra help. Really, we appreciate that you got on that board and
following that because it concerns me when you read that you wouldn't be allowed to charge for busing. And then where would they throw community funded districts into that mix if they're not going to give us any funds? But then they're going to tell us we can't charge. So we would see what that would do with our budget. It's a lot of concern.
Right. And there's all sorts of challenges related to the geography of distances that we're talking about and how it impacts. I mean, school districts are just really concerned because not only us, but you know, big districts that have significant challenges around busing. It really, I understand the goal and the intent behind it. But I think, you know, in practice, it's going to need to be worked out a little bit better. And in the other piece that we've all, you know, Jeff can attest to this. When you don't create an ongoing funding stream for an expectation, that's a problem. And it's a problem for everybody. And so, yeah, in the short term, you provide a service. But in the long term, you're going to end up having to take away something to continue to provide that service if there's no funding identified. So more to come. Obviously, that's going to move really quickly over the next two weeks. So I'll keep the board informed in weekly updates as things transpire. But I expect between now and Friday, we'll we'll start to see more, maybe some clarity around it. But in the meantime, I think, you know, our ability to lobby on that will be important. So.
Dr. Blair, what's our transportation cost briefly approximately per year? Or member Vickers?
Roughly a little over $2 million.
$2 million. Okay, thank you.
Don't we charge the parents for that?
Small fraction. The $2 million is our actual cost.
We can't get into discussion. I'm sorry because it's reports. I know. But can you update us on that? Sorry. This brings us to 13A. And my point on that is we can make comment, but we can't have discussion because it's not. I know, but I was afraid we're all going to jump in. So because we do, because we all care. So this brings us to 13A. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be held in person at Thurston Middle School on Thursday, June 23, 2022. And the August meeting will be August 11th, 2022. I move to adjourn. Can I have a second? Student provisional vote? All in favor? A second. I move. So, okay, I motion carries five zero. And we're journeying at 8:03 PM. Thanks, everyone.